And we just asked for clarity during this that we not get confused, that we understand that the purpose of Lent is nothing to do with what you need, but it's really what we need. And what we need is to come out of this season with a much greater understanding about how sovereign you are. And also just what you did for us in Jesus Christ. Now that was a sacrifice that was made that was yourself. But it was for our benefit. So Lord, we know that you love us and you know that you are always with us. And so if we ever question that in our hearts, let us come back and remember the Christ of it. And come back to you. We ask all of this in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. All right, so now I gotta share a screen. Can I do that? You. Make me a co-host. Now, host disabled participant screen sharing. So you need to make me a.
Got you.
Make me a co-host.
Okay, try now.
There it is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so. We're gonna read a little bit of scripture here and and we know that this story, this truth, this relaying of this of this particular verses from Jesus appear in both Mark, Matthew, and Luke. Which, as I said on Sunday, that's it's, there's a lot of harmony between those three, not so much with John. But there's a lot of harmony and we think, because when they look at it, we think, or some people think, some people smarter than me think that that probably Mark is the earliest gospel. And that Matthew and Luke both had Mark when they wrote theirs. So that's kind of why we see some of the similarities between them. However, what we wanted to do here, I'm sorry. Can I do this? There. Luke nine. We we read out of we read out of Mark on Sunday. So I want to lead, I want to, since we had that one and we can go back and touch on it because I'm gonna have some slides that we can use. We gotta come down here. So what we're seeing here is that, just set this up a little bit, John the Baptist, right, has been killed. And Jesus withdraws to a place and then people come to them. And I think there's people in the waiting room, Sherry.
Okay, got it.
And so then people, people are drawn to him and he ends up teaching, healing them. And then the apostles say, hey, you know, there's a lot of people here and it's getting late, you should send them home. And he actually says, you feed them. You feed them. So we have the feeding of the five thousand. And so this is, this is what's happening. And then following that, after this miracle, right? I want to start here with nine eighteen. So once when Jesus was praying in private and his disciples with him, he asked them, who do the crowds say I am? And they replied, some say John the Baptist, others say Elijah, and still other others that one of the prophets of long ago has come back to life. Now, this is all about, no, there's a lot of uncertainty about who Jesus was. He's been healing people. He's created quite the stir. John the Baptist was killed, so is, you know, is he a ghost that's back? Elijah was the major prophet of Jewish faith, and it said that the Messiah couldn't come back until Elijah reappeared. Elijah never died. He was taken up into the heavens in a whirlwind. And then, and then some people are, they're saying, well, some of you just say you're just a prophet. You know, long ago, whether that be Jeremiah or Isaiah or one of the many, many prophets. So then Jesus looks at them, he says, but what about you? Who do you say that I am? And Peter answered, God's Messiah. Or the Messiah.
That's the volume up.
You guys all right?
We're fine.
So this is the way that Luke is telling the story. And we hear in, we hear in Matthew, right, that this happens after, after they've done a lot of the the attitudes and sermon on the mount. Peter gets it, right? He says, you're the Messiah. And he says, oh, blessed are you, Peter. To you I give the keys of the church. And here in Luke, he says, he then he warns to everybody, don't tell any of this to anybody. Now, what's common amongst all of them is then he immediately says this after Peter makes this revelation. He, he says them, he tells them what's going to be happening when he goes to Jerusalem. And he says, the son of man must suffer many things and be rejected by the elders, the chief priest, and the teachers of the law. And he must be killed and on the third day be raised to life. This is identical. This is identical in all the gospels. So it's the story, right, of God's redemption of the world. He's saying, this is how it's gonna happen. Now, we know that in Matthew and also in Mark, that Peter doesn't react well to this. He's, you know, his, his. And this is not unusual, right? Jesus, this is not the only time that Jesus tells them about going to Jerusalem to be unfairly accused, to be beaten, to suffer, and then be killed, and then to be risen. And in fact, there's a theological thread that talks about, you know, just how dumb these are, what it, it just seems like that they're so tense, that the apostles are so dense that they don't get it because they've been told so many of, what's up with that, right? Is there a reason for that? But I also think that what happens is that they never get to that last part. They never get to that on the third day be raised. They just hear killed and then all of a sudden their emotions take over. And they say, and of course, so Peter says, Lord, we're not gonna let this happen to you. We'll fight for you and everything. And so after he just has been told to be blessed, he turns around and goes, you know, get behind me, Satan. You're a stumbling block. So you're, you're stepping in the way of God here and oh, man. I just, I just messed this up as far as trying to get it here. Nine, we were down at twenty-three. I'm sorry. Okay, so then he says, whoever wants to be my disciple, no disciple means follower, right? Kind of student, but deeper than that, you know, disciple, deeper relationship, mentor relationship and a true belief into it. Whoever wants to be my disciple must deny themselves and take up their cross daily and follow me. For whoever wants to save their life will lose it, and whoever loses their life from me will save it. What good is it for someone to gain the whole world? And yet lose or forfeit their very self. Whoever is ashamed of me and my words, the son of man will be ashamed of them when he comes in his glory and in the glory of the Father, know the holy angels. Word of the Lord. Well, thanks be to God. So a couple of things here. The first one in Luke, this Luke, Mark, and Matthew follow along almost identically through this. The only difference here, Luke and his, Luke is the only one. Says you know, they must deny themselves and take up their cross. And then he says daily. Right? So which is kind of unique. The other ones don't mention daily, just take up their cross and follow me. This is common for whoever wants to save their life will lose it, but whoever loses their life from me will save it. This is another commonality. What good is it for someone to gain the whole world and yet lose or forfeit their very self? Here's another commonality. Whoever is ashamed of me and my words, the son of man will be ashamed of them when he comes in his glory and in the glory of the Father and of the holy angels. So everything. I mean, if you want to say, look, if it's the same in Matthew, Mark, and Luke, right? It hasn't been corrupted. It hasn't been expanded. But one of the things that we're very careful about when we look at old texts and we have comparisons is that it's just like the game of telephone. When things are, when things are transmitted orally, they tend to get corrupted. And, and they never get smaller. The stories always get bigger, you know, as through that. But here's something, here's, here's three gospels and not only not only that, but it's been passed down over gen, each one of those has been passed down over generations. And they stayed very, very, very close. So this is important stuff. Really important stuff. I'm gonna stop this screen share right now. Well, no, wait a second. No, I am gonna stop. But I'm gonna get something. Let me get something chalked up here.
I feel like I'm controlling Grand Central here.
A lot of people coming in?
No, I got three screens on my phone. I feel like I'm operating like the flight station at the airport or something.
All right. So I, I do want to, you're, you're seeing this, right, Philippians?
Yes.
So Philippians is a letter, sorry, Sherry, but this is by Paul. We know it's by Paul. So Paul writes this, it's, it's also called the letter of joy. You know, when we say that it's the epistles, that just, it just means a letter. And he writes this while he's in prison. And he's writing to a fellowship of Christians that have helped them. They sent him, when they sent him, they sent him a couple of people and they brought, they brought money. And so he, he's thankful for them. But at the same token, he says, you know, but I appreciate all you've done and it was very kind of you. But he's also saying, you know, it doesn't put you in a favored position. So, but this is early in the letter, so he's still, you know, in this joyful mood and joy, I think appears twenty-six times in the letter. So this one is in the second chapter and it starts with the fifth verse. And this is called, this is called the, the kenosis or, or self-emptying of Christ. And we think that this is probably one of the earliest hymns. Right? We don't, we don't know the tune. It's been lost, but the words are here. We think that this is one of the earliest hymns that was sung in the church. Because he puts it in here into his letter and it's probably, you know, he, he put it in there because it would spur them to thought and it would be something that they would know. So I want to go through this because it's important when we talk about what is, what is denying oneself mean? So he's, this is, he's, this is Paul talking in your relationships with one another, have the same mindset or be of the same mind as was in Christ Jesus, right? And and then, and then he gets into this, this hymn, right? Who, being in the very nature of God, did not consider equality with God something to be used to his own advantage? Rather, he made himself nothing by taking the very nature of a servant, being made in human likeness. And being found in appearance as a man, he humbled himself by becoming obedient to death, even death on a cross. Therefore, God exalted him to the highest place and gave him the name that is above every name. That at the name of Jesus, every knee should bow in heaven and on earth and under the earth. And every tongue acknowledged that Jesus Christ is Lord. To the glory of God the Father. Amen. So that's called the Christ hymn, right? And the very ancient, you know, this is probably a, a letter that was written about fifty, fifty-five AD, so within twenty years, probably after, after Christ's resurrection. And the reason why I bring it up is because this, this, this Greek word is kenosis. And that means self-emptying. So what the point is here is that Jesus came and was God, right? He had glory just by being that way, but he gave it up. He emptied himself and became an ordinary human. Right? And then paid the price. Which was his death, even death on a cross, right? And the purpose for that, what is that? Then God exalted him to the highest place and brought it and brought him up. So this denial, right, is something that Jesus himself did. He, Jesus denied, right, his, his self-worth. He put the needs of the world above his own needs. And that means that he even was willing to, to put his life, right, in that place of us. But we also can become comforted by the knowledge that, you know, God recognized that and God then raised him from the dead. And by doing so, he exalted him. But we also need to understand that that's the one, that's the only thing God could do. We can't do that. God's not gonna ask us to step in and do that. Because he doesn't have to. It's already been done by God. Right? It was done once. It was perfect. And it was forever. So I always gotta be, make sure that people are aware of that when we, when we talk about that because there are people are like, oh, well, maybe God will, you know, call me to do that too. Well, probably not, right? Probably not. All right, so denial. What does Jesus mean by that? Yes, Art, you got something?
Yeah, something that started at the very beginning, but I was waiting until you wrapped up what you had. In that Luke nine, one, my question is, when Jesus gave them authority and power and then told them to talk about the kingdom of God coming, what was, what were they going to explain to the people? About the kingdom of God coming? What, what was it that they were saying?
Well, so you need to understand that they were speaking predominantly to Jewish people at that time, right? So the Jew, you need to understand what was, what was the Jewish faith, right? And just like we have Catholics and we have Protestants and we have Episcopalians, there was different, there was different denominations of Jewish people. We, although they were called sects, right? And, and they didn't. The common belief among most of them was that when you pass, you went into sheol, right? It's not hell, but it's all, and it's also, it's also not purgatory. But it's, it's, it's an empty space that you kind of float around in, and it's kind of this holding zone. And then when the Messiah came, right, that there would be a resurrection of all those people. But sheol is not an interactive, not considered to be an interactive place. So that's the Jewish thought. So when Jesus comes and he's proclaiming the kingdom of heaven, the first thing that we need to understand is that he doesn't really talk in direct terms about it because quite frankly, the people couldn't understand it. So he speaks in parables. And the parable saved to say the kingdom of heaven is like, right? And he says, you know, it's like a mustard seed, the tiniest of seeds, right? And it grows into this, this tree where even the birds will, will nest in it. Well, the message there is the fact that the kingdom starts small, but then continues to grow and envelops the world. And so he uses the parables as ways to teach about the kingdom. It's not, it's not a direct reference to how the kingdom is, but it's the best way that the, that humans and especially Jewish people of that age could understand. The, now, there was a sect that was of I'm, I guess royal. They were very well off Jewish people. And that was the Sadducees, right? They were one of the few people that did not believe that there was ever going to be a resurrection. That, that if, when the Messiah came, it would be an elevation of the existing people who were alive into a, into a much more privileged position with God. So I've done this before. So the way that you believe it is the Sadducees didn't believe in the resurrection, and that's sad you see. So that's one of the ways you remember that one. The, so, so go ahead.
So could I jump into that?
Yeah.
Did that mean what people were thinking in the Jewish, that Jewish sect that because they were wealthy, they must have been blessed? And so of a consequence, they felt that they were favored above other people?
Yeah, the, well, again, it was they felt if they died, they died.
I guess, I guess what I want to say is, you know, I notice that same thing prevailing here, now. Wealth, you gotta be it. You gotta be the one that God's, you know, saying, hey, you got it, buddy.
Yeah. Here in the United States by some people, yeah, sure. I agree with that. I have a, I have a here's an interesting thing. Or is it? I'll share this with you. I didn't know I was gonna be able to use this tonight. So did anybody ever watch The Office? They all, and remember Dwight Schrute? So his, his name is Rain Wilson. And he's actually a very, very spiritual person, not Christian. He goes to the Beni, which is a kind of a universalist. They don't, they don't deny the beliefs of any religion. So, but he just, he just had this, I just read this in the newspaper the other day. He said, the metamorphosis, the change, the metamorphosis of Jesus Christ from a humble servant of the abject poor to a symbol that stands for gun rights, prosperity theology, anti-science, limited government that neglects the destitute and fierce nationalism is truly the strangest transformation in human history.
Oh, wow.
You know, and I'm not, and I'm not putting it up to, I'm, I'm just saying, we need to understand that that truly, the way his, his take on those things. And there's no doubt that there's a, there's some churches that have been espousing that is that that's a very new phenomenon. You know, it's really only, it's really only developed since the nineteen seventies. And so you know, and it's really, is it good or is it bad? I don't know. I mean, it's gonna be what it is, right? But I just, I have a hard time. I read the Bible a lot. And, 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 and I, I've, I've read through it many times and I I just, I have a hard time thinking that it's anything but God calling us into a relationship with one another, honoring our differences. Right? And making sure that we're taking care of the least of the people. And, you know, and, and God's gonna work everything else out. But we needed so, but when we take a look at that and you know, it's a hard thing. Does that help a little bit, Art? Okay. So we're in Lent. We're preparing ourselves for Easter. So the reason why I brought this up is that really, this kind of presents a really nice methodology, right? Or, or a schematic maybe to how we can approach Lent, which is saying, well, how do we deny ourselves? Because we want to be, we want to be, you know, we want to achieve the kingdom of heaven. We want to participate in that. And so in other words, what we're told to do is number one, we have to deny ourselves. We need to take up our cross. And we need to follow Jesus. Sounds simple. So now here's my question. How do we deny ourselves? And Meg just said that was her question. So what does it mean to deny yourself? And that's why I put the Philippians two, six, or two, five through eleven up is because we can see how Jesus denies himself. Right? But again, I want to make sure that we don't, that we understand that what Jesus did was one thing that God could do, right? That's not what we're called to do. But what does it mean to deny ourselves? Go.
Yes, Tim?
Yes.
My, my thought, and I've been thinking this since Sunday when I heard the sermon, I feel this whole last year, we've denied ourselves being with family, being with friends, celebrations. But yet we're, we're doing it, well, at least like with me, I'm assuming everybody, because we care about the other people and we don't want the sickness and whatever to come. And yet we know people have succumbed to it. We, we felt the loss and and as you said, we're trying to draw closer to God with everything and how we've done our church services online and things like that to still be together. And I don't know if that comes into play with what the road we're supposed to be going down, but that's my thoughts about this last year and feeling like we, we have been denying ourselves.
It's been a long, long Lent.
Yeah, truthfully, yes. I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, maybe I'm total off base, but that's how I feel when you ask that question.
How about anybody else?
Come on, guys, don't be shy. How to raise your hands too?
Oh, could even be just that we are here today, be that we're denying, we could be watching TV or doing whatever, but we chose to be here to fill our souls or something, you know, instead.
Yeah. True. To strengthen ourselves.
Or you're denying yourself something that you know Jesus wouldn't approve of.
Yeah.
And doing that, you're becoming more like the person he wants you to be.
Good.
Barry, Margot, or Laurel have their hand up?
Um, my, my interpretation of it is kind of just not falling into selfish mode. And especially during these times. It's really with, between COVID and winter and everything else, it's easy for me, just talking about me to into the, oh, my gosh, I'm just too tired. I can't go make that phone call to that person today because I'm too tired. I have, I have nothing left to give. Everything, all my energy is going into sustaining myself. And but and the, the, there's a story about Jesus, I think, right in that Luke, right before what you read, where he went away to get away from the crowd and be alone and they followed him. And then he had to go heal them and feed them and, and all he wanted to do was be alone and, and get some rest and pray, but he went ahead and, and took care of the crowd. And, and I think, okay, well, I guess that's what we should do, but then yeah, but he was Jesus, you know, I, so, but, but then when I do set aside the time to make the phone call or send the card or something like that, I end up feeling better. So even though I'm quote, denying myself and taking up my cross, it's better for me in the long run.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think I'm always a big fan since I had, since I was Catholic, when I was young, I, I did hardcore Lent and Ash Wednesday and Good Friday regiments. I'm always a big fan of taking things on so that they can become habits going forward. So I'm always pushing, let's take stuff on, let's take stuff on to have like a new, you know, new, what do you call it? New?
Ministry.
Yes, new ministries and, and new good habits. So I'm always about taking stuff on instead of giving stuff up. So I don't know if that's theologically right or wrong, but I've been going with that for years.
Oh, you're right. What did I say when I started, right? Oh, you're right, what did I say when I started, right? There isn't any one, there isn't a one, any right way or wrong way about Lent, it's the purpose of Lent.
But I try to make everyone do it with me, is that still okay?
Well, you might be on shaky ground sometimes. So.
When I was raised Catholic, we always had to give up something, but I liked when I came here. That it was to take on something and not necessarily give up, but now I kind of, I never understood. Why did they feel like they had to give up fish or meat or whatever? But now I do understand it a little bit just by your passage that you said, you have to deny yourself, and so that's what they're doing. They're denying that thing they love, chips or chocolate or whatever it is, even though it seems silly. At chocolate, why are you giving up chocolate, but yet now I get it, they're denying this thing that they love, or, you know.
Yeah.
It makes more sense now.
The um, so. Maybe think about it this way too, is. Back in the fourteen hundreds, um in France, no, I'm sorry, Italy, it was in Italy. They had what they called the Bonfire of the Vanities, now there was a book that was written about a tycoon on Wall Street, and it was made into a movie that was really. Really very, very good, but um, but it has to, and it had to do with, you know. These young people that they come up and they're in the finance world, and so it's all about playing with other people's money, and they became about the Rolex watches. And, and the Brooks Brothers suits and the BMWs and all that stuff. And it all comes crashing down, um when um, when. One, he, he's driving drunk and he hits and kills a poor black man. And he tries to hide it, so this whole world comes crashing down, so it's called the Bonfire of the Vanities. But the original Bonfire of the Vanities occurred in the fourteen, late fourteen hundreds in Italy. And there was a bishop in the ca, in the church, and he would have, um, he wanted everybody in preparation for Lent. To take out the things that caused them to be vain, like mirrors and makeup. Um, and um, anything that caused them to spend excess amounts of money, so they even got artwork. And they would put it into a big bonfire and they would burn it, it was called Bonfire of the Vanities.
Wow.
Um, now the Pope, he only did it for a couple of years, and then the Pope realized. There's some really valuable stuff that could be given to the church that's burning up here, so. He, he said, stop it, and then, then the bishop wouldn't stop it, so he ends up, um, he ends up, uh, well. He ends up being hung uh on, on a cross and then executed, so um, so, so anyway, so that's. So that's a pretty extreme side of Lent, right, that's, that's probably one of the, but when we say deny. And I think what, when Christ says deny. We need to deny ourselves, right, and what that means is that if we live and we put our, our own needs first. And our own self first, in other words, hey, I'll be glad to help anybody, but I'm getting mine first, right? Um, and, and I can justify that by saying, you know, and, but I have, if I don't eat, then I'm not gonna have the strength to help other people. So we could justify that all that we want to, but at the end of the day. I put myself ahead of other people, right, cause I said I'm more important, for whatever reason. And I think that what Jesus, and he demonstrates this on the cross, and he's telling people about this is what's gonna happen. Um, you know, is that, you know, you look, you gotta deny yourself. And by denying yourself, aren't you in effect saying, I'm not the most important person in the world? Right, I'm just, I'm just one of many, right? And um, there's all, and, and really, it's God, my Creator, right? That has a lot, has all the power, and I'm gonna admit that, and I'm, and I'm gonna go along, and I'm gonna. I'm gonna try to live under the ordinances, cause we've been reading out of Deuteronomy, right? We're gonna live under the ordinances and the commandments of God. So, it's this sense of self that becomes, um, you know, and, and it can become extreme with some people. But this sense of self that, um, you know, you're the most important person. It, it, and what's more so is that, you know what, you, you, you control. You're the rainmaker, as they would say on Wall Street, you know, you make things happen. And um, and that gets really, that gets, that gets really, all of a sudden, you've lost the purpose behind everything. Which was the, in, on Wall Street, hey, everybody's gonna make money, everybody's gonna have a better life, right? The, the clients are gonna have a better life, um, all the people that work in the, in the organization are gonna have a better life. The country makes it better because we've raised the gross domestic product. But you know what, along the way, all of a sudden, the CEO is saying, well, you know what, I, I deserve ten percent of this firm's profits. I deserve four hundred million dollars a year, and that's what, that's where they are on some of these things. Is there anybody worth four hundred million dollars a year?
No.
You know, I mean, I, I'm not gonna. There's a reason why I'm out of business and in the church, right? And part of that is that I saw just how corrupting, you know, that could get to people, and, and um. So I don't think I ever let it get to me, you know, but by the same token, that if you've been blessed, it's not because money's bad, right? What if that guy, what if there's a guy out there that makes four hundred million dollars a year and says, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help. You know, solve the water crisis in the world. By the way, there is a guy with six billion dollars that's doing that, you know, Bill Gates. And, and um, so, but it's not the money, right? It's become, it's when you just could become so involved with it that you think that it's, it's all about you, it's all about you. And I, and we've all known people, we've all known people. And um, I've been related to some people, right? Who were sure that, uh, yeah, hey, we're gonna do something nice, but I'm gonna get mine, my part of it too, right? Well, why not just do something nice for people that don't have something? So denying is really, to me, is denying that you're the most important person in the world. You know, that you're gonna get your relationship right and understand that, hey, it's God up here, right? And that I'm to be a servant, so I need to look at everybody around me, and I'm not supposed to judge, and I'm not supposed to put myself above them. And I fail at that almost every day.
I like the way you think, Pastor Tim, and you're always so honest.
You know, we probably all do. If we're, you know, if we're honest. So deny, deny yourself. So it's a preparation, right, it's a preparation, because when we deny ourselves, what we're really doing is we're putting, we're making God sovereign. And now, God's power can work through us, right? We're on that second thing, take up the cross, take up your cross. So, from a historical standpoint, um, and I got some pictures I'm gonna share with you after we talk about this one. Take up your cross. It does, it doesn't, doesn't say take up Jesus's cross, so he doesn't say take up my cross, he says take up his cross or your cross depending upon. So what's our crosses that we bear? Now remember, that at that time, the cross was well-known by the people in the Jewish territory. Because in the, in, in the territory of Israel, because it was the way that Rome dealt with uh non-Roman criminals. Troublemakers. And it was a painful death, um, and it would, it would go on for days. Um, and they would do it in very public places and leave the bodies hanging there, so. They kept, made sure people, that other people saw it so that they didn't step out of line. So, when they say, pick up your cross, take up your cross. That's something that I could be, I could, I could be killed for, right? So, or something we could die for. Or it would kill us, it'd probably be the better way to put it, right? What are we gonna do? How are we gonna, what are we gonna take up? So take up our crosses.
What would be good examples of that, like bad habits or things in our life that are negative or, or toxic? Like what would be good examples of taking up our own cross, any of those?
Good question. So I think. To me, I'm gonna say this, and then I, I want other people, if you feel comfortable enough to do it. I, it's, to me, it's something that I can be convicted of, right? Um, so if I look at Matthew five and six. Which is the Sermon on the Mount, which where Jesus says, this is, this is the ways of the kingdom, this is the economies of the kingdom. And he compares it to the world, right, he says blessed are, got a whole list of them, but blessed are the meat, right? But they shall inherit the, the earth, blessed are the peacemakers. Blessed are the poor in spirit. Right, it goes through the whole list. And realize that it's really the, the things that aren't the opposite of those were the things that aren't blessed. And I think that those are the things that I personally say, boy, that can convict me. Right, that could mean that I was, that those are the things that are standing between me and a tighter relationship of God through Jesus Christ. And if, and if I was taken from this earth today and I was stood before our Lord Jesus and went through it. I'm, I'd have to say, hey, there were fewer, fewer times that I just think that I failed.
To face your worst fears.
Yeah. But when I pick up that cross. We'll show a couple of pictures and we'll talk. You know, me and pictures, right?
Where's your old art that you love so much?
Right here.
All right.
That what you're looking for?
Yeah, sir.
Pastor Tim, is that a Russian Orthodox picture, cause that's what it reminds me of?
It's east, it is Eastern Orthodox, but I think it's, I think it's Greek Orthodox.
Greek, oh, okay.
Yeah.
What does it say, do you know?
Uh, uh, um. It says, it says. This is, uh, you can't see where I'm pointing, anyway, up there in the upper left, as you're looking at it. It says, uh, you must take up your cross and follow me. So on the left, you see that's Jesus, he's got the biggest cross, right? And then, um, and this is not a maze, this is, but you can see here. That there's people that continue to follow along, and in those, I can't read it, but um. You, you see what, those are really halos, right, this is the way that the Eastern Orthodox, this is probably medieval about time. So, um, and you can actually buy these, they, they still make these, and you can buy them, if I ever make it over to Greece or Turkey, I'm gonna buy one. Bring it back with me, but um, the um. So you can see they're following Jesus, but they're each carrying their own cross, so I just thought that was really interesting.
If you go to Alaska, Pastor Tim, you can buy them too, because the Russian Orthodox Church is very prominent in Alaska.
Is it?
Yep. Katchikan.
Oh, okay.
In Katchikan.
We wanna go to Alaska. We were gonna take the RV until we sold it. Maybe we'll, but I think that's.
We're hoping to do that a couple of years, cause we did the cruise, but yeah, I'm pretty sure I'm right, it was in Katchikan, and they had the Orthodox churches in some of the stores we went in had.
They do, they do, and the Orthodox churches, by the way, folks, if they're beautiful, cause they're, they're kinda like the onion top churches that you see and. And uh, they do this, here's, here's one that was right out of Luke twenty-three, twenty-four, right? Deny themselves, take up, you can read this all the way down, so I just saw this one, and I go, that would be pretty neat. I could put that at my office if I ever found that one. But look below this, right? We're into this next part of it, right? Whoever wants to save his life will lose it, but whoever loses their life for me, for me, will save it. Think about that, as we look at another picture here, here's another Greek Orthodox. And um, you can see the prevalence of the crosses that are on their mantles. You know, the, the stalls that they're wearing, so these are, this, this is um. These are priests from that. About this one. You get that? The object of the cross. Isn't to be easy, right? The object of the cross is for us to face up to our biggest fears. Right? And those fears are things that we know. We think will separate us from God for eternity. We, we just feel it in the pit of our stomach, that this one, man. I don't know if I'm making it through the pearly gates, cause of this one. But we put that on the cross. Right, which means that we nail that to the cross, just like Jesus was nailed to the cross for, to expiate, to take away sin. We can take that and we can nail those things that are within us that, that create. Um, this, what seems like an impenetrable curtain, right, between us and God, and say, God, I don't, you know, here, this is that. And we carry that cross, so we're, we're carrying it out in the open, so other people can see it, and you know what? Jesus told us that once things, evil things are in the light, they die. They die.
Wow.
Deny yourself. Take up your cross daily, right? Follow me. Follow Jesus. Jesus has a lot of teachings, I mean, I just, I threw a couple more at you there about, you know, Matthew five and six, take a look at that, that's telling us. That's telling us about how different the kingdom is gonna be. Doesn't necessarily tell us that, Suriun Kirkagard was a um, Danish theologian and um. Uh, late, later eighteen hundreds, and he um, he has this great comment, and he said, you know. If we use, if we use the Sermon on the Mount in Matthew five and six as a score, scorecard for who gets into heaven. We all fail. Cause we're just, but it also shows the perfection in there, so here's the question, right? Or a question, here is a question. And, and, and maybe Art, maybe this talks a little bit to what you brought up before too, and what Rainn Wilson told us. Right? There is not any. Manifestation of the kingdom in full to be found on earth. Right, and, and so, this theology of, you know, of a city on a hill and, and um. The fact that the United States would, is, is the new Jerusalem, which was actually very popular in the, in the later eighteen hundreds. That was uh, you know, is the fact that we say, look, as long as we are, as long as we're under. The constraints of this physical world, right? We're gonna have elements of us that can't be completely holy. Because we can't put our trust, we refuse to put our trust completely in God. And part of that, because we've seen people that have said that they did that and they died. And then we think about, well, if heaven really isn't real, maybe that's not gonna happen. Um, so maybe I, I better not put my complete faith into God. That's where we start to get into these things that we, that, that uh, subvert us and subvert our relationship. The things that, that might have to go up on the cross in order for us to do it.
I, I've got one uh thought that's running through my mind, and that's about David. And, you know, on the various Psalms that you've gone through, and, and. Sometimes I, I find myself measuring myself against other people. Which I know is totally out of character and shouldn't be, but I do it. And, and then I think to myself, that's, you know, there's no way that grace and mercy work in that fashion. But, you know, I see David constantly saying that, you know, his heart. Is towards God, and, and the thing that I notice is that it, he's always. Considering just the day. Considering just the day. Not the one before and not the one that's coming.
Yeah.
Just the day. And, and when he is meditating or however these. Psalms come together. Yeah, it, it's. I, I appreciate the fact about nailing things to the cross. Uh, that made sense to me anyways.
Thank you for sharing that. The, here we've got, uh. Sherry Keys, you have a raised hand.
Well, you, you know, take up the cross and I understand all that, but. How do you get the stuff off your cross?
So, um, generally, uh. Why do you have to clear it?
Or how do you clear it?
Why? I, I just, I'm bringing up, but why? Why would you wanna clear it?
Because of yours, if those are the things that you think.
Yeah.
Are the one things you've done that aren't gonna get you into heaven.
Right.
And you want to get into heaven.
Yeah.
Don't you have to kinda clear it off?
So I, and here's the thing, it's the things that we convict ourselves of. That we don't think we're worthy. There isn't anything that any of us, anyone. I mean, they always say, you know, could, could Hitler be in heaven? You know? I like to really think not, right? But. It's all up to God. And, but the thing that we know is that we have God who is, who is steadfastly. That, which means it doesn't change in love with, with us as his children. But. We, we can't. We convict ourselves. God hasn't convicted ourselves, convicted us. We've convicted ourselves because we say, I don't see how anybody could forgive me for this, especially God. God forgives, cause we just have to go with a repentant heart. It's just that we hold on to this thing and we can't, we can't let it go ourselves. So the only way thing that we can do is. Put it up on that cross. Nail it there, right? So it also is exposed out so other people can see it. If need be. And the thing is, is that once it's up there, it dies. Dies. We don't need to worry about it anymore. We don't need to clean our, I don't think we need to clean our cross off. We might just need to nail the new next thing on top of it. So here's a, here's a more contemporary, right? If we look at this one, this is a more contemporary. Uh, rendering. I see people walking through, walking through the streets, but the thing that struck me about this. Is the joy that you see here. Right? You would think that, hey, you're, I'm carrying my cross, just like Jesus carried his cross to the streets of Jerusalem and it was terrible, but here's people that are carrying. They look pretty joyful. So this artist, this artist looked at it, um, from, from an aspect. You know, turn, turn that jewel and see another thing that I never, that I didn't think about until I, until I looked at this. Here's kind of a neat thing. This is actually a print, but it was done as a, uh, wood carving. And then it was, and then it was made into a print. So if you look here, there's a lot going on here, but it says, take up their cross and follow me. And if you look down to the lower left, you'll see that the nails, right? See the nails there? And then we also have the bread and the cup. So to this artist. And I don't know what these, I don't know what the things in the middle are, right? But we can see in the, in the upper left, you see the dove coming down. Yep, and the crown of thorns. So they've done a really good job here in the very bottom right. You can see there's Jesus in the middle with the two. And the people around it. But I, the, the thing that drew my eye is number one, the cross in the center with the take up their cross and follow me, but then look down over here in that bottom left. And we start to see the nails who held Christ to it. And then we have the communion elements. Those things which join us together in our faith, right? Um, and also, um. But also. I mean, they. When we do them, right? We are, we are basically in communion with all of the saints of all time. It's all done in purple, which is the royal color. I like that. Here's a, here's a quilt. I did this one for my wife. So it's a quilt with all sorts of different colors on it. So if you're a quilter, maybe there, there's something you can do during Lent, right? You can do a cross quilt. I like this one. Anybody can wear one, but can you bear one? Right? Sometimes we do things because. Jesus said, don't be like, don't be like the person who prays in, in the street beating on their chest, right? Go into, go into a closet and, and pray such as this. And he teaches us the, the Lord's prayer. Cross. Is the most powerful thing, right? About. About the Christian story. Cause without the cross, right? We just, we, we have nothing. Without the cross, we just have the story of somebody who could have been, um, a great magician. Right? Or, or maybe, or maybe was a holy person, but wasn't any greater than any of the other prophets. But it's, it's the cross that he goes to the cross, not because of what he did, but because of our separation from God, all of us, even the, you know. And then, and then in the power of God was resurrected. So that's the power of the cross, you know, that we bring into it. Now, I need to stop this. And open it up for you guys, cause you need to talk. If I get out of this. Are you still looking at that? No, you don't see anything?
You're still, you're still sharing. Go to the top.
Stop share. There it is.
All right. All right. So unmute or raise your hand. Let's go.
Oh, um, I was just remembering while you were saying all that and. We're seeing the pictures of the heavy crosses. Um, Matthew. Matthew eleven. Twenty-eight and twenty-eight, twenty-eight through thirty, where he says. Come to me, all you that are weary and are carrying heaven, heavy burdens. Take my yoke upon you and learn from me, for I am gentle and humble in heart. And you will find rest for your souls. For my yoke is easy and my burden is light.
Right?
It just seemed to kinda. I don't know, make you look at carrying the cross in a different.
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly. I agree. The, um. We talked about Dietrich Bonhoeffer last time. This German theologian priest. Who, um, was killed in, uh, April of nineteen forty-five. So, um. There's a book. And, um, I have. Anyway, it's a small book. I actually have, I thought I had a first edition of it. But it turns out to be a second edition. It was one that I found at, uh, the book sale at, uh, at Princeton Seminary a long, long time ago. But, um, so he, when he dies, right? Um, his papers are collected and he had sent letters to people. So there's two, there's two main books that he wrote. Uh, and they were both, they're all in German at first, so it took a little while for the English translations to get it. In fact, not until basically nineteen. Forty-nine, nineteen fifty. So. One of them is Letters from Prison, right? If you're ever interested in reading that, that's his, that's his correspondence that he wrote to other people. Um, out of prison while he was imprisoned. And the second one is the cost of discipleship. So a disciple is a follower of Christ, right? And, uh, I just had a couple, a couple of his quotes that I wanted to share with you. He says, following Jesus is totally voluntary. He doesn't coerce people. He doesn't bribe people with a home in the sky and a perfect life from now until moving. He merely invites them to come, follow me. But he demands one thing though. He insists on having first place. When Christ calls a man, wrote Bonhoeffer. He bids him to come and die. To deny oneself is to be aware only of Christ and know more of self. To see only him who goes before and know more the road. Which is too hard for us. All that self-denial can say is he leads the way. Keep close to him. All right. I got a couple more that I wanted to. If I can get to them.
You said that was one of the best things you've ever read. You said that during worship. Neighbors from prison.
Um, yeah, the cost of discipleship is really good. I mean, both of them are really, really good. But, um. But I would say that it would take you less time to read Cost of Discipleship. It's not a, it's not a thick book. I should get it real quick. It's, you know what? It's over. Would you, um, it's in, it's a plastic, it's now it's in a plastic bag behind. On that, by that little footstool. I'll show it to you. All right. So here's another thing that he said about it. The cross is laid on every Christian. The first Christ suffering, which every man must experience, is the call to abandon the attachments of this world. It is that dying of the old man, which is the result of his encounter with Christ. Think about that one. He's saying, hey, when you. You know, when you deny yourself, when you take up that cross, what you're basically doing is that's the new birth, right? Maybe that's the birth from above that, that, that John talks about, that Jesus said. This is, um, so this is the cost of discipleship. It's not a very big book at all. It's not very thick. Um, this one was published in nineteen fifty-one. And, um. So. As I said, it doesn't take an awful lot and, um, there, it's also got cart, um. It's also got commentary, uh, along with it. All right, here we go. He talks about cheap grace. So in costly grace, so here's, here's, here's the cheap grace one. Cheap grace is the preaching of forgiveness without requiring repentance. Baptism without church discipline, communion without confession. Absolution without personal confession. Cheap grace is grace without discipleship. Grace without the cross, grace without Jesus Christ living and incarnate. So. We have to be careful. As a, uh, the Presbyterians are a liberal denomination, right? Be the first to admit that. One of the coolest things about us, I really think so. But. No, but I have to say that we need to be careful. Because sometimes you can take Christ out of it and it becomes secular humanism, where we're thinking, you know, we're doing good deeds for people that are in need. But we've taken Christ out of the equation and that's really dangerous if we do that. So that's why prayer is really important. You know, if we pray, we continue to keep, keep Christ in the whole mix. So we talked about cheap grace there and now he talks about costly grace, because costly grace is the treasure hidden in the field. For the sake of it, a man will go and sell all that he has. It is the pearl of great price to buy, which the merchant will sell all his goods. It is the kingly rule of Christ, for whose sake a man will pluck out the eye which causes him to stumble. It's the call of Jesus Christ at which the disciple leaves his nets and follows him. All of those things are in the Bible. They either happened or they're a parable that Jesus said. Or it's warnings that he gave to people. And then the last one. What are the disciples to do when they encounter opposition? And when I say disciples, that's you and me. What are the disciples to do when they encounter opposition and cannot penetrate the hearts of men? They must admit that in no circumstance do they possess any rights or powers over others. And that they have no direct access to them. The only way to reach others is through him, Christ, in whose hands they are themselves, like all other men. Right? That's. I, I read that and I was like. You know, that changed my whole outlook on ministry, you know? God's in charge, right? Jesus calls us as disciples, so we're all in ministry, right? And, and so. I'm not here as a minister to mediate grace and say, you get it, you know? Scott, good job. Well done. You know, oh, Norma, sorry, didn't make it this week. You know, that's not my job, you know? My job is just to open up the channels so that the Holy Spirit can flow through and people can. Make that connection, hopefully, but I'm not so successful all the time. And if I measure myself by having to think that I have to be successful at it all the time, well, then I'm gonna be really disappointed. Right? I need to trust in God that it's there. I've always said that we're in ministry and when I say we're, we are in ministry together, there are many, many ministries of the church. And when I was in Homer, um, I was, I was executive director of, of, um. Homer Caring and Sharing, which did all sorts of things, but it was a food pantry, but it was also an emergency. It was emergency money for people. That were had utility shut offs. Was the hardest thing I ever had to do. You know, because it was, it's, there was somebody in need in the community. They ended up at our back door at all hours of the day. And, um, and usually they were just saying, give me money, give me money. And it's like, no, that, that's not the answer to go through this. But. We had a lot of people that volunteered from church people to non-church people, just people that were in the community that thought it was the right thing to do. And we, they would work here. Now, we had people that were completely down on their luck. We had people that were abusing the system. We had people that were grateful. We had that whole list of people. But my hardest job and the whole thing. Was to keep the people volunteering to come there. Because at some point they would say, they go, you know, um, we work hard. You know, uh, we feel, we understand that people hit hard times, but here's the, here comes this guy in here and he reeks of cigarettes and booze. And so he's got money for that, but he doesn't have money for food. And, you know, this is, we're, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna do this. So. The hardest thing that I had to do was to keep people and say, you know what? We are being abused. You know, and there probably are people that, that are spending their money on things that they shouldn't. We also need to realize that when poverty, when people have not, nothing, they say, you know, I don't have enough to go to Meyer. And buy a shopping cart full of. Of, of food. But I got enough to go out and buy a six pack and, 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 uh, and a pack of cigarettes. And they do that. The other thing about poverty is that they, they share everything. So if somebody's got some food, it's not, they're not gonna hoard it. They're gonna share it. That's a beautiful. Right? The other thing is, is they couldn't, they couldn't go out, they couldn't have a cart of food anyway, cause they had no, no way to store it. Or cook it. So telling people this and saying, look, this is just like a big oak tree, right? And God is gonna work in their lives. And every single time that we have the ability to, to, uh, to interact with them, it's another. Shot of the axe at the oak tree. And the first five hundred hits aren't gonna do anything to that big oak tree. It's not even gonna shake, right? But eventually. One of those acts hits is gonna topple. The Holy Spirit's gonna come in and flow into their lives. And that's why we do this. Right? Cause God's the one that provides the salvation and the comfort. Which is vessels. So anyway, I've talked about.
Lots of good stuff tonight. Wow. Goosebumps, right? Goosebumps, right?
Well, don't convict yourself.
That's our, that's our takeaway, right?
Don't convict yourself. If you think that, if you think that there's something separating you from you, you from God, it means that it's in your head, because God doesn't care. God. I mean, God cares about whatever you think it might be, but it's. He'll forgive anything when you come to him with a repenting heart. And sometimes by nailing it to that cross and showing it to him. So it takes. So it takes.
It's like the best, best attitude I've had about Lent in a long time. That's.
Well, don't forget though, don't forget. In order for it to work well, you got to deny yourself. So you say, okay, it ain't all about me, God, right? It's about you. And then here's the things that I've done that have really tried, I, there really been attempts for me to lift myself up so that I could be the equal of God, which there's a commandment against that, but. Um, and then, and, um, and then, and then you gotta follow Christ, right? Because Christ had all kinds of teachings about, uh, which, and I just pointed to Matthew five and six, because maybe that's the most compact place. If you're going to look in the, if you want to look in the Bible and say, where do I find out how I should be living my life? Look at Matthew five.
Blessed are the peacemakers.
Amen. Anybody? Questions or anything? Now I know that my computer on a full battery will at least go for an hour and twenty-five minutes.
Nice.
You feeling better about Lent, everyone?
I am. Now I feel bad for only taking things on. I gotta put something up on my cross. Give up something.
Call me, I'll tell you what to put. No.
Yeah, can I, can we do that? What, what extension, what extension can we use? You know us well enough by now. What is all the extension? You tell us what are good.
Yeah, sure. Didn't want to tell you.
We'd get in the hall of shame for that, probably.
Yes, it's all good. It's all good.
That would be interesting to hear though. Truth hurts, right?
No, but I'll tell you what. I mean, the biggest thing is, I, I didn't. I don't think I gave myself the time to, uh, to really prepare for, for. I got real serious about preparation for Easter, probably about. I don't know, maybe six years ago, right? And, and I just, and, and really, I mean, I tried, I tried the denial thing, you know, to deny myself something. And then, but I then I, when I figured out finally, hey, this is about growing closer to God. And I gotta tell you that on that Easter Sunday, right, when we opened worship and, um, there in that particular church, we would shroud the cross. So the first thing that happened is that, you know, uh, we would come out and we'd get the smallest child that, who could speak. The smallest child who was talking. And they would pull, they would pull on that, on that shroud and it would unshroud the cross. And then they would look and they said, uh, uh, you know, he is not here. He has risen. Right? And then we say, hallelujah, he has risen. And then we would just, you know, then all of a sudden, um, the choir would, you know, process in. And it was just the most uplifting experience. I mean, it all of a sudden, it's, it's made me surpass Easter, uh, surprise Christmas is my favorite holiday. Uh, Easter is my favorite holiday. Because it really is about new starts. And it's about the love of God and the power of God. But more importantly, it's about how we can lift ourself up into God's light. So Christmas is really good. Everybody's happy about Christmas. You know, until week after it. But Easter, we can bask in that light for a long, long time.
Kim, I do have a comment from the Facebook chat, Barb Hopper, or I mean Barb Priest. Um, this was very interesting tonight. Lots of food for thought. We'll be doing some rethinking. And she also has a family member, a sister-in-law who lives in Ketchikan, what Cheryl was talking about.
Ketchikan.
Ketchikan. And thank you Barb, because I'll be doing some rethinking too.
Wonderful. Alright, well, everybody, anybody have any questions or anything?
Can I call you? No, I'm sorry.
So, alright, well, we'll be live at nine o'clock tomorrow and, uh, we'll see a lot of you then. I know a lot of you do it, or they watch it afterwards, but it's been great to see you all. Thank you for being with us tonight. Bless you all.
Thank you.
Yep, some of us has bigger crosses to bear than others, right?
I, I would like to point out a, a very cool thing. I have never, ever had to mute Sandy Sauerbeck. She is a perfectly still person who never moves and never makes a noise. Dang, I wish I had that kind of discipline. I'm fidgety. I'm always talking and fidgety. Look at her. She's perfect. Linda Wolf is like second to that and Margaret.
By the way.
You know?
Can, can just raise your hand visually, right? If you can. How many of you have downloaded the app?
Not yet.
Come on. It's on the homepage.
Alright, I tell you, if you, you could go to the homepage and get it. And Margot, Margot and I were talking today. And, um, people, you can't believe, when people do it, they're like, oh, this is so simple, right? So a lot of it, and, um, it's really neat and, uh.
If you have a smartphone, you already have apps on your phone. It's no different. And everything you want from the church is on there. Everything. It's so great. Please, if you have a hard time, call me or Margot. Yes, Paul Wolf, go to the homepage of the face, I mean, of the website and download it. I love what you say.
Paul, I'll show you how to do it.
You guys take up your crosses together. Come on.
Margaret, if you downloaded Zoom to your phone, you can download the app for the church to your phone.
I could do Zoom on the computer. I can't do Zoom on my phone. I don't like that phone. It's.
Yes, you can.
Margaret, you called. You, you can do, you can zoom on your phone.
Oh, and we're finding stuff out about the app, right? That number one you can give, you can ask for, request prayer. It goes, and then that drops a message directly to me.
Contact the office. I mean, there's so many things you can do on there.
But the other thing is, is that if you have it, um, whatever, whatever is the latest thing that we put up onto YouTube is the one, is the thing that's there. So you see the daily devotionals, um, you know, we put this up onto YouTube. That will be there until we put something else. But what we didn't under, what we didn't realize is because we go live on YouTube is that you can actually watch services, the service, a Sunday service live on it, so.
Oh, okay.
So if you're in your car or something and you're, you know, you're bored and you need to pass your Tim fix.
While you're.
Look at your app.
You're, as you're a passenger in the car.
Yeah. I'm going to ask one question about that YouTube Live. Uh, I haven't figured out how to do that chat thing to say hello or anything else. I can do it on Facebook, but I don't see how to, uh, do the, you know, like good morning, how are you, whatever.
I'll, I'll look on Sunday and I'll do a screen grab of it and I'll send it to you so you can see where it's at.
I've seen it, but I, I, I don't know how to actually, once I click on it, it's like, it just, there's nothing where I can start to write or.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at it. Cause YouTube is very clear and good.
There is a, there is a theory that our music sounds better on YouTube.
Oh, it does for sure. Sometimes the picture looks better, but Matt Carlson has done something and the Facebook is super clear. Glad that's not my face out there in that bright light.
Hi Aunt Mary.
Hi Barbara Wolf. It's good to see you too.
Alright, well, let's have a prayer. Let's have a prayer and then we can. Yes, Judy, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, I, I was surprised. I looked in on the app today under events. And there wasn't anything listed about the Bible study. I was thinking that maybe that would have been in there.
Well, there will be next week.
Well, yeah, thanks for bringing that up publicly.
Well, no, I, 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 I was wondering what kind of events are going to be in there.
Well, that, those kind. We just haven't figured, we just, we're still learning.
Okay, well, I wasn't, I was just, it was just a curiosity.
I don't know if you guys, can anyone see? That's what it looks like when you open it up. I don't know how much you can see of that.
Wow.
It's just, it's very, very, very handy.
Anyway.
Margaret, you call Judy tomorrow or later and she'll help you set it up on your iPhone.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll come over. It'll be easier.
Alright. Well, Layla would love to see you.
Layla, and I'll play with Layla.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, let's pray. Let's pray. Lord, I have to be honest. Sometimes when, um, I look at what I've, uh, put together for this and I'm just feeling like it's inadequate. And then when we arrive here, uh, we find that your spirit steps in. So Lord, we thank you for all the ways that you have given us through your scripture that we read together. Through artistic impressions that people have put together in many different, uh, in many different ways. And then Lord, our own experiences. We thank you that we've been able to look at Lent and the words of Christ and put them together in, in, in ways so that we might be able to connect and to understand you far better than what we could even an hour and a half ago. So Lord, uh, we, that happens through your Holy Spirit. We thank you for the presence of the Holy Spirit. We thank you for this community of believers who gathers together so that we can study and then experience your word together. And Lord, we ask for your blessings as we continue through this Latin journey. Uh, we thank you for the fact that we know that there's an end point. And that will be Easter Sunday when you were victorious over death. But we need to have that in our lives. We need to know that we can walk confidently. And so Lord, as we leave this place today, our prayers go out for all people who are feeling weak at this point, who are in need of healing. Uh, for the people who, um, Lord, just, uh, they, they like to feel, they'd love to feel your love. Just surround them. And we know that that's a place that can be very lonely if you don't feel that. So Lord, be with all these folks. But most of all, just make sure that we understand that what your promises were that were made so long ago were, were perfect. And that they will be made complete in your own time. And all we need to do is to pick up our crosses, deny ourselves and follow Christ. And we'll be part of it. We ask this in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Have a great night, everybody. It's up to Carrie. Carrie, Carrie controls turning everybody off now. Love you all. Bye bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Bye Barry, bye Margot, Laurel.